Hey guys, so in today's video, what we're gonna be going over is we're gonna be going over pandas. And really, it's just going to be pretty much going through flashcards. Um, in particular, working with uh the pandas library and learning the vocabulary that's used in pandas. So that way um we pretty much just have it off the top of our head. And I, we don't really, we need, need to do any research online or need to um yeah, just do research online. Uh, the goal of this is ultimately just to learn as much as we can, uh because I found as with working with SQL that um if you know whatever the function is that you happen to be working with, uh it's very, very helpful and it saves you a lot of time if you know how to use length, cast, um substring index and all the rest. So for this, we're gonna be focusing on pandas, which is a Python library. Um, and in our last video, what I was working with is I was working with the Titanic data set, which can be found on Kaggle and likewise so too can a summer data set. All you'll do is type in um Olympic data set Kaggle and I believe it should be the first one there. You'll be able to download summer and then from there you can um manipulate the data as you see fit. Ultimately, what this video will be about is just going through the flashcards and then attempting to recreate um those things like the uh the vocab in memory. So let's go ahead and move this one over here, this one over here. And then um yeah, we'll just dive in. So ultimately, what I have in front of us is Anki. And what we're working with right now is this Titanic data set. And the question is, what does the following output if we use the Titanic data set? So right now we've got Titanic and that's the uh data set, so or the data frame. And all we're doing is we have our data frame in front of us. And now we just need to identify what does Titanic dot n smallest, n equal to uh columns equal age, what does this return? What would you think that returns? Um, feel free to pause the video as you see fit, try to answer the questions so you also are memorizing them. And then I'll give my analysis on it as well. Ultimately though, what's happening with Titanic dot n smallest is it is going to return the smallest value. Now, when it comes to columns equals age, uh what it's gonna select is it'll go ahead and select the age column. And likewise, it'll return the smallest two values. Um, n is actually the number of rows. Um, so yeah, so that's why it'll return the smallest two values. So Titanic dot n smallest, uh let's go ahead and show the answer. And then it was kind of like just what I said ultimately. Um, sort by smallest value and equals number of rows. Now, how, how I just explained that kind of shows that I'm very confident and comfortable with this uh vocab. Um, there will be future flashcards that I'm not as confident in. But I really remember this one very vividly from yesterday, so I'll go ahead and select this as easy. So it pops up in four days' time, uh and then I can remember it later. And for those that are curious, the reason that this flashcard will show in four days down here is because Anki was designed with spaced repetition um as uh as a driving force for why the um software is created. In essence, what spaced repetition is, is you practice something on day one. If you know it, you feel good, you can practice it the next day and that'll be day two. And then again, if you feel good, then you can practice it in four days after your second day. And then from there, if in four days a few you feel good and confident, you can practice that in either fourteen days or even a month. And the point is, is that the more you practice, um uh the longer you'll retain that information in memory, right? And you only need to practice like once a quarter, once every two quarters, so long as you still have that uh information in the back of your mind. So that's why spaced repetition is so powerful and that's why I'm choosing to do it with um programming uh in particular. Uh, my goal is to eventually get over to React and start building some MVPs and then go down the business route since I come from kind of a business background uh with Shopify and everything. But I'll go ahead and dive into the next flashcard. So what is the following output if we use the Titanic data sets? And we're working with just the age column. So if we were to do age dot sort index, all sort index is doing is it's organizing the uh data, the data by the index. So nothing would really change, we would still have index one through um zero through whatever. So sort index would would just return the age column because that's what we've selected and it'd still be in the same order. Um, the answer is it sorts the output according to the index. So yeah, so the same order, twenty-two, twenty-two, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, thirty-five, thirty-five as well, and then so on. Um, another example would be sort index ascending equals true and in place equals true, that's right. So we go ahead, we can go ahead and save it in place. I'm not sure if in place true equals true is default, but you can always do in place equals true to go ahead and just save it. So I feel really confident in this, so I'll go ahead and study this in nine days. Um, what does this do? So so it looks like this gives us the answer, but saying source by P class, sex and age, but goes in ascending order by P class and age while sex is not in ascending order. Okay, so this will be a good one. So how can we sort by P class, sex and age? So if we were to go ahead and write that out, what I would do is I would say that should be good. So how can, how can we sort by um P class, sex and age? Uh, what we would do is we do data frame dot, I believe, sort values. And then from there, it would be uh, I'm kind of cheating. Um, the reason I'm cheating right now is because I, I'm thinking that in my mind it will be a list if I'm not mistaken, because we want to do survived. We want to do age and we want to do we would like to do P class as well. Oh, no, so P class, sex and age, okay. Sex and then age. Let's change that to P class. Um, and then from there, what would happen is we'd want to do ascending equals true, false and true. And then is there any other requirements? So but goes in ascending order by P class age while sex is not in ascending order. So we want to make sure that sex is false and that's we have that there. But it looks like the other two in ascending order by P class and age. So ascending, which would be P class and age, which would equal true. Um, yeah. And I think we would want to do that in place, in place equals true. So this in essence would be our output. Hopefully you can see it, but uh we'll go ahead and see the answer right now to see if we're right. So this was the answer that was given to us and pretty much we worked backwards. So how would we work backwards to get this as our result? So what I did was, so we did did it Titanic dot sort values, just like we did here, except this is data frame. DF and then it's a list, so that's right, P class, X and age. Ascending equals true, false, true, and then in place equals true. Okay, cool. So I feel really confident in that. Um, I wish that this would show up in like two days. Maybe it would just be a good test, so we'll do that in four days or I'll do that on my own if anything. Because I think I'm gonna want to switch over to um Psychitlearn or something else shortly. Um, what is this? So we have our invoice and our date. And then we're saying that equals invoices and date as as type uh date time. Um, so this isn't very helpful. I know that this is an answer. Um, I'm assuming that it would say, how would you how would you adjust the uh data type of a specific column? And what you would do is you do as type. Now let's go ahead and see if my guess was correct. And it's how can you convert a columns data type to another data type? And yeah, if you were to do that in SQL, there's actually a number of ways. A number of ways you could do that, you could use cast uh as well as convert, I believe, depending upon what um library or what sequel you use. But for pandas, you would use dot as type. You would use this and then from there you could go ahead and select whatever the um whatever the data type they would like it to be. And a lot of guys do know that you can also do int thirty-two as well as float thirty-two. And if I'm not mistaken, I do believe there's also int sixteen and int eight. And I think that's related to the bit types, uh but don't quote me on that. Just know that I, I feel fairly certain that there's also uh int thirty-two and float thirty-two as well. Um, so yeah, so that's something that's fun. Um, also know that if you eventually do work with TensorFlow or PyTorch, that you will also be able to update um to int thirty-two, like you'll want to do that quite a bit because I believe the model trains faster on a lower bit. So I'll go ahead and select good because I feel really confident with remembering as type. Um, yeah, so we'll go ahead and do good. And then this is what we actually just worked on, but this is now in reverse order. Uh, the first flashcard that we had. So if you remember, if you wanted to organize by uh the smallest value and get the uh smallest two rows, you would go ahead and enter this information. And likewise, you could also do Titanic dot lock, which you're pretty much locating. And then from there, you also do you're gonna do Titanic dot age, so you're selecting the column. And then id x min and then I'll go ahead and return the minimum value. Um, yeah, I'm not sure I like that one though. I mean, it's, it's useful for that, but um yeah, anyways, I'll just go ahead and click easy so we don't have to see this again. Oh joy, I really wish, I wish that the question came up first, not the answer. Okay, um, darn you. Damn it. Um, so where to start? So if hypothetically, we were working with I don't even have the data set for it though. Regardless, the point is that if hypothetically, you're working with data from years two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and so on. And they're all, they all have their own labels like uh why twenty thirteen, why twenty fourteen, why twenty fifteen and so on? How would you be able to bring them together? And how would you be able to essentially stack them on top of each other? So the top would be twenty thirteen and then below that would be twenty fourteen and then below that would be twenty fifteen. How would you be able to do this? And what we would do is we'd go ahead and use pd dot concat. And all that concat does is it pretty much gives the example of what I said earlier, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and so on. Now, something that's quite fun and quite useful is once you do remember pd dot concat, you can also use the keys and what'll happen is it'll create like a um a hierarchical index almost. Um, and what happens is thirteen would be correlated to every value from your twenty thirteen data set. Fourteen could be correlated to every value from twenty fourteen data set and so on, you'd kind of get the pattern, right? Um, but you'd be able to do this with the keys um function, uh I'm, I'm not sure what to call it, but like the built-in part, um yeah, the built-in part. And then you could also go ahead and select the name for the keys, which would be the first position right here. And then likewise, the original index and that would just be the value. Um, the index from uh whatever your, your like first data set is and so on. So as you see right here, so thirteen shows up for thirteen, nineteen shows up for twenty nineteen. And then we have year and likewise original index. So this might be something you'd want to see. I do wish that I could make it larger, but I don't. I mean, that's, that's something. And then from here, what you can do is you can also take a screenshot of this if you like and then just learn a little bit more about it. And then here's just kind of a visual of like what I was explaining a little earlier. Uh, vertical stacking is what it's called. I'm not, yeah, vertical stacking. So let's go ahead and move on to the next one. I'm really, really confident with pd uh concat. The one I will, would like to see is uh dot join and dot merge. Those are the two that I really want to see um next. Um, thi- this is random by the way. So if each year is one CSV file and we wanted to concatenate them together, how can we do this? Uh, I feel like I should rephrase that because I know what concatenate means. But I feel like it'd be easier for someone that doesn't know it, so um I think I'll just leave it for now and then I'll change it later if I think of something. So that I feel really good with, but let's go ahead and study it in three days. Next question is, what does the following output if we use the Titanic data set? Titanic dot sex equals male. The, what do you think the value will be that it's returned? So will it return um only male values? Will it return a boolean value? We'll go ahead and see. So it'll return a boolean value and for those that don't remember, booleens are true or false. Um, I personally feel really confident with this. Uh, you can feel free to play around with it, just know if something equals it, generally it's gonna be true or false, like equals equals. So that's easy. And then what's the following output if we use the summer data set? Let's, I should get rid of that. I just don't like how it's phrased up there, so the question will be let's say you want to reset your index with the year column, how can you do this? So right here we have year and here's our index uh which is athlete, how could we reset it? What we could do is if we wanted to reset it, let's try to make this bigger. Um, how do we reset it? What we would do is summer dot set index. And then from there, I'd go ahead and select year and drop equals true, yeah. And then in place equals true. Thanks, thanks uh Google. So what, that's, this is my thought process and like this is how I'd answer it. I just wanted to give you a visual of like what I'm thinking. So again, the question is, well, we already have the answer, but let's say you want to reset your index and we're resetting the index with, oh no, we have set index. Interesting. Reset your index with the year column, how can you do this? So I, I would still stick with this as the answer, but um feel free to um run your own code if you're like coding along or something, but uh let's go ahead and see the answer. Because I do know reset index is there, but let's see, so it's still set index. And what would happen is this would be switched over. So summer dot set index year, drop equals true and place equals true. And all that drop does is it drops this, the column right here. And because we're setting the index to year, it'll go ahead and update it on the index position. Athlete gets bumped um and then does it in place. So, so yeah, so that's pretty good. Uh, let's go ahead and see this in six days. And then next step is it returns true or false. I don't want to see this one again. But pretty much Titanic dot sex equals equals male returns a boolean, true, false, true, false, true, false. True, false, false, false. So this one will be good. Write the blowout put, how can we locate the two values that shows a string? Um, with the blowout, but how can we locate the two values that show strings? Okay, so what this is telling us is it is taking the, this data frame and it's taking the meal price column and it's gonna go ahead and do dot apply lambda of X. And all that's happening is every value um AKA the object in this uh column is going to be um identified as a specific type. And we're gonna go ahead and count the values and that's why we have this value count. So we have two that are showing as strings, two values as strings and the rest are showing as integers or numeric values. Now, how can we actually see what this value is? Um, that's what our goal is to identify what the true, the output is. So what I would say is, were you working with invoices, but I'm just gonna use data frame DF in place of invoice. So let's see if I remember, so it'd be DF meal, meal price, because that's our col- our column. And from there, I'd go ahead and do dot apply lambda of X. And then from there, I'd go ahead and enter is instance X stir for string. And then yeah, I believe that'd be it. So all that's happening here is we're gonna go ahead and select the column or the data, the yeah, the column, the proper column. And then we're gonna say for every value in this column, go ahead and check if um X, if that object is a string value and then return it. So that's what I believe the answer is and let's go ahead and see with the flashcard. So I was wrong. What I forgot to do is it would be uh, it would look something like this. So what the answer is actually would be data frame meal price. Meal price. And from there, we would have this um in essence locating where that uh string value is. So it's all within this price that it's attempting to locate it. Invoice, yep. Yep. So if you're um questioning it, feel free to go ahead and run it for yourself um and check it out. But uh let's go ahead and, let's actually test it right here. So let's go ahead and do Titanic. Or let's do data frame because that's what I have. Let's just switch the columns around. So let's go with um sex, because that was one of the columns. And then from there, we can go ahead and run it. Yeah, and what's happening again is because every value in this column is a string, it is returning a string. If we were to go ahead and change it to int for integer, it would return nothing because no value in the sex columns is a um is an integer. So that one I would like to see again, mostly because I screwed up with this first portion right here. I always forget it, but I do remember the um lambda dot apply. So yeah, so let's go ahead and do hard, let's see it in three days. And then what's the next question? So what is the following output if he is Titanic data set? So Titanic, Titanic dot sex equals male and fair. So all that's gonna happen is we're returning the fairs for um for individuals that are male, right? So we're gonna return uh seventy-two, five hundred and then likewise eight, this one as well. And it will go ahead and return every male one and it's only going to return the fair value and it won't actually return sex. That's what my guess is. Um, let's see if that's right. So it was right, cool. So, so again, um yeah, just returning all males that have a fare and it's returning that value. So that'll just be something to remember. Um, yeah, I'll just go ahead and select easy for that one. Well, maybe good because I would definitely forget this part. So that'll be good. And then this one again, so meal price apply lambda and we're having this value. Now, if we wanted to take the two string values from the output below and turn them into NAND values, how can we do this? So remember last time it did return two values, two uh string values? If we want to return a string um value that is in a integer highly uh highly numeric column, how would you do that? How would you turn the string values into NAND? Um, one way of doing it is we can do pd dot two numeric. And then from there, I would go ahead and enter uh the data frame and then meal price because that's the column. And then from there, I'd go ahead and do errors equals coerce. And what coerce does is it will take um any value that would pop, that could possibly return an error. It'll go ahead and transform it into a NAND value. Now, you can also use ignore. And there's one other one, but I don't remember what it's called, but regardless, it would be coerce. And that would be um how we would transform these string values into null or NAND. So yeah. So yep, pd dot two numeric invoices, which was our data frame, meal price equals coerce. So what were the other ones though for the air? So we have ignore, raise and course. Raise will go ahead and parse, parsing will raise an exception. Uh, this parsing will be set as NAND and then likewise return the input, so just ignore it. Okay. So this one could be potentially really useful. Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and select good for myself because I feel really confident with this. Um, you yourself may want to re- remember it on on your end, so yeah. And then next up, so what will this return? What will Titanic dot loc? Titanic dot sex equals male comma fair, what will that return? So in our last one, what we had was try to make this a little smaller and move this over. What we had was data frame dot loc. And from there, it would be data frame dot sex equals male. And then from there, we'd go ahead and do fair. And that returned all the male values that were the fair um as the fair column, fair. So would this be the same output as this with the comma? Um, I believe that it would, so let's go ahead and see what the answer is. So it does, it does the same thing, then it returns the fair that men paid, similar to the bottom screenshot, which is the one that we just did. Cool. Um, I actually kind of like this one a little better, although I feel that would be faster to type this one. So let's click easy. And then this is an answer. I've done it quite a bit, but in essence, what we're doing with uh the length age dot unique is we're returning all the unique values um from the age column. And we're gonna go ahead and count the length of those um values and that'll return eighty-nine. Now, with regards to age dot and numeric unique, drop equals false. What's happening is this one is also counting the number of unique values for the age column. So if we wanted to, what we could do is we could go ahead and uh clarify if that's true. Because I do believe that this one up here, age dot unique. Um, actually no, I believe that N unique is the uh default is set to true. So let's go ahead and see if this is valid, so it'd be Titanic dot age dot unique. And let's go ahead and see if it's equals to a Titanic type, oh no, it'd be data frame, data frame dot age. Because that's how I have it set up right now. So data frame dot age um dot N unique. And then it'd be drop NA equals was the default value or boolean value. So it is boolean set to true, so let's go ahead and leave this as is. We'd see that's false and then let's go ahead and do drop NA equals um false. And then it's set to true. So, so yeah, in essence, this one will return um even a NAND or null value and then likewise you'll need to set for uh number unique um this to set to false. So yeah. And then the same thing for value. And then the same thing for value counts, notice how there's the difference with drop and NAND or drop NA equals false. Otherwise, it would drop it for true. So when doing the research, just always go ahead and make sure that you understand if NAND or null is being dropped or not. Um and then this would have been the question, so like what is all, what do all these return? I feel really confident in them, I just hope that like I'll remember them. Like the vocab right here and here, well, actually this one will be fine. So I feel good, let's try that in a week. Next up. What does a blow output for the Titanic data set? So mask one equals Titanic dot sex, which is equal to male. So we're returning all male values from the sex column and this is what the the um the variable will be. And now with regards to this Titanic underscore male equals Titanic dot locate mask one. So huh so it's it is returning just. Male, I guess, cause we're only selecting. Or is it, would it be true? No, it would actually just return. Yeah, it would return true or false based on whether it is a male value, so this would be turned true. This would be false, 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 true. And then I believe that if we were to just run just Titanic underscore male. That it would be true, false, true, false, true, false. So let's go and see if I'm correct and. So I'm not, what it's doing then is it's returning. Male, 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 so it's returning the same output, but just all men. Um so mask one gives us true slash false. Hmm, so that's why, that's why I said that, I knew that this was gonna give true or false right here. And then Titanic male returns location of all true values, which are all male values. Oh, the locate. That's right. So that's why I did that, I didn't get past part one. Okay, so. I'll go ahead and select good and then once this does pop up again, I'll go ahead and just start um start coding along and collab. So I believe that's good. So what is the following output use? So we just saw this a little earlier, what does uh you dot unique return? It returns all the unique values in a specific column. Um I'm pretty sure that the it's really straightforward. So let's go ahead and just click the answer and yeah, it returns all unique values from age. Um so yeah, I feel really confident with dot unique and N unique, so I'm just gonna click easy. And then next up. What's the blow output for the Titanic data set? So Titanic dot D types. Mask two equals Titanic dot D types equals object and the max two, so that's a good one. What do you think that this one return? So if we have our data types for Titanic dot data types. What's all that's happening is kinda nothing right here, like it if this line of code was run on its own, it would return. All the data types for each column, so it have survived as int P classes, int sexes, objects slash string and so on. Now, when it comes to this, what it's doing is saying mask two equals Titanic dot data types. Equals to object. Now, earlier I said that it return true or false if this if Titanic dot sex equals male. And I'm gonna stick with that guess right now, um and yeah, that's a guess. Because uh I'm not a hundred percent certain that mask two will return. Return true or false based on uh if the value is a object. Meaning this will be false, uh survive false, P class. False sex will be true and then so on, but I have a feeling that that's entirely wrong, so let's just see what the answer is. Uh so wow, okay, I was right then um. So again, what's happening is up here, it returns the object or the uh data type. Int int object float in in float object, object. And then we're able to return false, false, true. And then that's because this one is also an object. So that's kind of interesting to know, I don't know if I'd ever use it, maybe like as a condition. Uh if if X, you you know, a condition or maybe have that like as a break of a no. Maybe just a condition, that's the only way I could see myself using something like this, at least for now. And then if we wanted to return the false values, what we could do is Titanic top locate. Everything and then this little squiggly, I don't know what it's called. But I do believe that it means not. Um kind of like the bang equals or AKA exclamation point equals. So yeah, so there's there's that. I think that this would actually be much more useful, but you'd also be writing some confusing code. Cause I mean, you don't really need to write just this and this, you know. Eighty twenty rule, let's go ahead and select good. And then was this the one that we wanted to look at again? I guess I'll go ahead and cut it off here, cause I think I'm coming up on the half hour mark. But in essence, what what would this return? Titanic dot sex, which is equal to male and then fair. If you remember, all that this will return is sex. So to re- return every row that is male equals to male. And it's gonna return just the fair column, so seven twenty five and then eight oh five as well and then so on. So we would see the answer. It would return seven twenty five, eight oh five and so on. So I feel really confident with this, I would love to see it again um. Yeah, I would love to see that, see this populate again, so let's just go ahead and click easy. And then maybe this will be the last one since we're working with mask again. What is the blow output for the Titanic data set? Titanic dot lock mask one mask two. Remember mask one returns males, mask two returns false rows. Except it returns um. It returns integer values, so it doesn't actually return sex uh yeah, the sex column. It returns integers, floats and just not object. Um so for sure would not return sex. So that look will allow us to locate database on multiple conditions. So what would this output be then? Um if I'm not mistaken. It'll return still all male um male rows. So return zero four and five, like index zero, four and five. But it will also only return um. Data columns that are not objects, AKA they're not uh strings, so if we were to go ahead and run this. Uh let's see. So it returns zero, which is zero, so again, we're focusing on just males because that's what it was. And likewise, this squiggly mask two will return. Uh columns that are not objects, AKA they're not strings, so that's why we don't have sex populate. And embarked or deck populate. But we will have all numeric rows that are correlated to uh male. So that's actually quite useful. So I'll go ahead and click easy for now. And let's all look the joints. No, I'll uh I'll leave this for tomorrow, so. PD dot merge left, right on subject line how left, I think I'm gonna wanna bring in a gif because. It took me a long time to remember how to do joins and like I had to visualize it, visualize it and visualize it. Before I was finally able to understand what the left join does and now all I do is pretty much left joins, even if I could use an inner join, I use left. So that took a while, but that was fun. I hated it. Oh man, I hated sub queries. Um let's go ahead and leave this for tomorrow and then we'll kind of hopefully recall what we worked on today. Uh so let's make this large. And what are we working with, work with the data frame, AKA the Titanic data set. Boom, let's actually just do columns for now. Sorry, able to see the columns and then likewise summer dot columns. And then we'll spend like the next maybe ten minutes going over what we learned or like as recall, so we able to recall it, recall it, recall it. And something that I think would be wise to start off with is something hard. And that squiggly line mask, um it's it just stuck in my mind, so I'm gonna go ahead and work with that right now. So how would I create that? Um just out of memory without re- rewinding or bringing up the flashcards again. So what was it? It was data frame dot D types, cause we wanted the data type and then returned the data types. And then from there, what we had is we had a mask. Two equals data frame dot D types. Equals equals object. Ooh, is that right? Yeah, that is. And then from there, we do data frame dot loc. Data frame dot sex. Equals male. Let's see if we do this right, so it's a little pretty and then from there we do squiggly. No, squiggly, let's squiggly. Where is it? Yeah, mask two. And let's go ahead and run it, so if you remember mask one. Equaled um at least I hope, I hope that I remember this, cause I do know that it was true. And we'd wanna return all um values that are true that are related to uh male. So let's go ahead and run this, let's see if we get an error. So. That's actually kinda cool, I think, I think this would just be more like that little fancy, like just something fancy that you would see. I'm picturing like the emoji or like the gif where you have that stick figure and he's got those little whiskers right now. Um and like a top hat and a monocle, but yeah. That's interesting, I don't remember seeing body though. I wonder if this is an updated um Titanic data set. It might be, so passenger ID P class. And then the body weight, that's interesting. So more data for the machine learning algorithm classification. Okay, so that's cool. Next, let's go ahead and do like summer data set and let's go ahead and look at it, summer dot columns and then let's go ahead and do the first thing that we worked with. So it'd be summer dot. How would you return the? How would you return the? I guess lowest year? I'm like looking at these values like discipline year, I I would have chose age, let's just do age, forget it. So how do you return the youngest? Two passengers on the Titanic. Um there's actually a million ways, well, not a million, but there's a lot of ways to do that, so. How would you do that though, like this and smallest? What would you go ahead and enter after that? What I'd enter is N equals two, because that's the number of rows. And then from there, I'd go ahead and select the column, which would be age. So I did not decide to look at what populated. So the positional argument follows keyword argument. So N equals two, I know that's the right. And then the columns. It should be age, shouldn't it? Maybe I need to type that out. I guess so. So yeah, it looks like the data set was updated, cause I believe four point two was the youngest before. I don't remember seeing, oh no, maybe I do. Regardless, whatever, so. If, for example, we want to return the smallest value and equals two. Um the smallest two, youngest two individuals on Titanic, what we could do something like this. And then from there, you could go ahead and save it um as a variable or whatever, hmm work through stuff. So and smallest and then also mask and data types. What else do we work on concatenate, so let's go ahead, how do I wanna do this, so? Let's use summer dot year. Um dot unique. And let's go ahead and see what the unique values are for that. So we have ninety eighteen ninety six onwards. Let's go ahead and save them into their own data frame, so what we'll do is we'll do data frame. Um we'll do oh four, we'll just start with like oh four. Which is equals to summer dot year. How am I gonna do this? Equals no. Summer dot locate. Summer dot year. And then is this a? I just wanna know if the year column is a data type. The or like if it's an integer. So is it in, okay. Dot equals nineteen oh four. And then is that it, summer dot locate year equals nineteen oh four, the underscore oh four. So return everything for the year of twenty uh nineteen oh four, I was thinking two thousand and four. So let's go ahead and just copy this or like let's actually cut it out, so we get some good practice. Um and then from there, we're gonna go ahead and stack some. So from there, we'll go ahead and do summer dot locate. We're also gonna go ahead and locate summer dot year equals to how about nineteen oh eight? Nineteen oh eight and then we'll go ahead and do one more and let's actually change that, sorry. So it's every four years and then we'll do data frame underscore twelve equals summer dot locate. Summer dot year. Equals to nineteen oh no nineteen, what was that twelve? Yeah, nineteen twelve. So if we wanted to, how could we go ahead and stack these together, so remember what I said a little earlier? You take the first one. So in our case, that'd be nineteen oh four. And then you want below that, we wanna have all values where they are nineteen oh eight and then below that, we wanna have nineteen twelve. So how could you do that if you can recall, um and it starts with a C. So. For those that didn't give it a try, we'll go ahead and type that out. So what would be is it, and by the way, we're not gonna add a. A key. Or the names for that, not yet anyway. But what would happen is we could go ahead and do PD dot concat. And from there, it would go ahead and be. Data frame oh four. Data frame oh eight. And then data frame underscore twelve. And from there. Do I need to save it as a variable? I don't think so. What would happen is we would have the output, so we see that everything starts at first at nineteen oh four. And likewise goes up to uh nineteen twelve. Now, for those that did add the. The additional information, if we wanted to, for those that are still curious, how can you? Divide everything in this data frame or like in this concatenation. So um how can you make sure that we have one value showing for everything for nineteen oh four, so for example. If we saw sixteen sixty three, or sorry. Yeah, six hundred and sixty three up to six hundred and sixty seven. For all of these values, how can we have four show on it? For because this is nineteen oh four, so we'd have like oh four, how would you do that, how would you add? Um I mean, I've pretty much been hinting at it, but how would you be able to add uh oh four, so that way it is a um. I think I'm screwing this up when I say about hierarchical index um in essence is above. Um, in essence, is above and um has every, all these other rows that are correlated with this one section. So. In case I haven't already given it away, um, what would we do? Is we'd go ahead and do PD dot concat. And then we're typing this out again just for the sake of memory, data frame dot uh muscle memory, what I mean, data frame dot oh eight. And then again, data frame twelve. And then from there, it would be keys equals. And then we could go ahead and name our keys. So, oh, whoops. Yeah, actually, we could. So it'd be oh four. Oh, eight and then twelve. And then from there, what we could do is we would need to name it. Is it name or names? What does it say? It says names. Names equals. Uh, what what would you wanna call this? So let's go ahead and call this. I guess, I'm, I don't know, year, year S, no, that's lame. Um, just year works, year group, sure, year group, group year, whatever. And then the next one would be OG index for original index. Um, why are we doing original index? Because I kinda wanna give the index a name. So but otherwise, what would happen is this year group uh should take on the keys first if I'm not mistaken. And then this would go ahead and take on the index. But if ever you're in doubt, go ahead and just run the code and see what it does and then just update it. So, yeah, so let's run it. Let's see if I was right. So, yeah. So I I I explained this horribly, but in essence, that this is what I was getting at. So this oh four, it would correlate to everything in um. That is related to the year two thousand and four or nineteen oh four. And likewise, oh eight would do it as well for oh eight years and then twelve would do it for nineteen twelve. So, so yeah, that so that's this thing dot concatenate. Dot merge and dot join will be questions that you'll be asked on in an interview. And likewise, so too will be grouped by. Now, I haven't gotten to that yet in like my flashcards. I don't think I actually have them honestly, but um just know that you're gonna be asked about left joins and inner joins. Um, and then likewise also. How to use rolling windows functions for pandas? That was a horrible interview. So, yeah, I I didn't know that. Um, when I interviewed for the company, but yeah, I'll just stop there. Um. So next up, I'm probably gonna go ahead and uh finish this video right now. If you like, please feel free to book a session on snug with me. Or go ahead and download the um Anki flashcard set. Um, yeah, I've found that they're really, really useful. They're very helpful and recently I was listening to Lex Freedom podcast. And he was talking about it as well. Um, so yeah, I'll just kinda end this video here. And yeah, I'll see you guys in the next one. Thanks.